On call to order, the January 20th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Commissioner Murphy.
May we bow. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for giving us the opportunity to gather here today to do this thing that we call planning and trying to make this community and this city of Longview a better place to live. Father, we just ask you to bless and protect us and protect our men in the services wherever they might be. Help us to come to support each other better. Help us to have a better spirit of brotherhood throughout this city and throughout this land. Give us the guidance, the understanding, and the reason to do your will and to do the will of the citizens of Longview on this evening. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the invocation or pledge allegiance to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the December 16th, 2004 Planning and Zoning Minutes. Do we have any additions, deletions, corrections?
I saw approval.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ah, regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. Applicant, staff, and then a general public, those of it in support, and those in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, a public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on a request. Zoning request and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to a second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on February the 12th, 2015. Item A on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-01 filed by Premier Management requesting a rezon from agricultural to general retail for approximately 1.5 of the abstract 258 PP Range Survey Track 29-05 Section 4 located at 330 East Hawkins Parkway. Who present represents this request? And I think I have a speaker card also. Scott Zorn.
Planning and zoning members and city staff, we are attempting to rezone a little church behind the Home Depot. That church was put there, I believe, about around 12 years ago. As you know, churches can go in any type of zoning, so it's still agricultural zoning. We have purchased the entire block of 15 acres, which butts up to the Texas National Bank and then goes over to the old welding shop. There you are. And that's the last piece that's not rezoned, is that little church right there. It sits on about an acre and a half and directly across from the new hospital and the Institute for Healthy Living. We currently have some customers here with us that are attempting to move a restaurant here from Hallsville, have a really great Mediterranean restaurant. So since this little piece got left out of the zoning on the entire tract, we're just basically asking to get it converted.
Commissioner questions for Mr. Zorn.
Mr. Zorn, are you in liberty to say which restaurant it is and name it?
Well, I'm not, but if she wants to get up and talk, she can.
All right, thank you.
Now, this is, as Michael's going to tell you, this isn't a future land use, general retail, of the future land use that we've been talking about.
Any other?
So there's no contrary zoning that we're asking for.
How's that? What type of area, what type of structure are you going, are they going to use the existing structure or are they changing?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to modify the existing structure. We're going to take out some interior walls, we're going to put a new facade on it, we got to redo, we have to redo all the handicap issues associated with the building and, you know, fix the structure up.
Okay.
So this is not a raise, it's not a bulldoze.
Good, because there is a beautiful tree.
Thank you.
Mature tree, right there in the front.
Oh, wonderful trees. Yeah, and all the parking's there, all the lighting's there, all the signage is there, everything's hooked up, sewer, water, sprinklers, everything, it's done. So it'll be a pretty quick conversion.
So the trees are staying?
Correct.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Good question.
Any other Commissioner questions for Mr. Zorn? Having none, staff comments.
Thank you, Chairman Wood. As the applicant had previously stated, they are rezoning this property located here on Hawkins Parkway from agricultural to general retail for a restaurant. As Scott previously had stated, this was previously a church, and a church is allowed in any zoning district. So with a restaurant going in here, they are requesting a rezone. The comprehensive plan designates this area as medium density, medium intensity business, which is appropriate for this type of use. Hawkins Parkway is a minor arterial, which is also appropriate for this type of use. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff. Having none, the public hearing is now open for application, application Z-15-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support for this request? Having none. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Also having none. The public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved, seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. I wish that skating rink could have been this easy.
Just a bit tonight, didn't they?
Yeah.
You can make it difficult.
Nah, nah, we're.
I'm resisting.
We're here to help you. Okay. Item B on the regular agenda. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-02 filed by Fred Hakim requesting a rezone from multifamily to general retail for approximately 2.332 acres of abstract 71 D Ferguson Survey Track 17 Section 2 located on the south side of Toller Road west of Gilmore Road. Who present represents this request?
Hello, my name is Fred Hakim, and we requesting, we definition builder, we requesting to change 2.3 acre proximity of the almost 11 acre to retail from a residential.
Okay. And let's see, we didn't have any preliminary plot or anything that went with this, right?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. Questions for, Commissioner questions for Mr. Hakim.
Comment only. I'm happy to see you building something out west into town, and I hope that we can.
We're going to, we're going to start pretty quick, as soon as we get approval, we're going to get it to engineering and start working on it and getting built.
Well, I'm familiar with this property on Toller Road and the frontage that we have there, so that's, it's going to be a good thing, I think.
It says the remaining piece of property will stay MF3 and be developed as residential.
It's going to be the attached townhouses, two or three arm or four arm attached together. They do a lot of that in Tyler and Dallas. It's very demand for the houses around 180, 190. The rest of the property is going to be used that for the attached houses, townhouses.
They'll be sandwiched in between all the retail? Is that what you're saying?
Behind the retail.
Yeah, the retail's up front.
There's all retail behind it too, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's going to be going between the retail, going in the back, and back how it's going to be a residential with the gate, gated residential.
That's correct. Any other Commissioner questions for Mr. Hakim? Having none, staff comments.
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting to rezone from multifamily 3 to general retail along Toller Road. The development is approximately 2.332 acres of a larger tract, and as you can see, this is the larger tract right here that's in purple, and he's just rezoning this portion right here to retail. The comprehensive plan designates this area for medium intensity business. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map, and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff.
How much land is left in between there, did he say?
I think he said approximately 11 acres was left.
Total or left?
Total is about, about 10 something acre.
Okay, almost 11 acres total, and you're taking 3 and 2.3 out of that, so there's nine acres left or so. Eight something, no, thank you.
Any other Commissioner have questions for staff? Having none, the public hearing is now open for application Z-15-02. Who present wishes to speak in additional support? Thank you, Fred. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second. I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
If anyone opposed, motion passes. Item C on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-03 filed by 1601 Alpine Interest requesting a rezone from single family to general retail for all block 7, Valley View, Lot 8, Block 8, Valley View located at 1601 Alpine Road. Who present represents this request?
My name is Kevin Stagner. I live at 41 Oak Creek Ridge, and I'm here to represent the 1601 Alpine Interest.
Okay.
And I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Stagner, tell us about your project.
Well, the property was bought probably two years ago. It was a school for a number of years, having been built in 19, oh, sometime during the 1950s. It was built on something that was already deed recorded as a lot and block for single family development. Of course, it being a school, it could go into any designation, and so what we're doing since there's been a number, well, I think it's been about five years since anyone has actually used the building, whenever the Longview ISD voters voted to build new schools, they scuttled this one, and so they, they sold it, and we're trying to use it, we're trying to use it for its best value.
Okay, and I guess right at the moment, do you foresee the intended?
It hasn't been changed since 1950, the single family dwelling application.
Okay. Do you, do you have any idea of the, of the future use that you anticipate?
We are just to the north here, on the same side of the street. Can you point to the tire store? We're touching a general retail spot where that tire store is, and so we're asking for the same application for our school.
Okay. I guess my question, I mean, we're just changing it, changing the zoning for, for future marketing purposes?
That's correct.
Or any idea?
We, we do not see it being used for single family development at all. We see it more as, and we don't really see duplexes or apartments here, we see it more as office space.
As, as somebody renovating the structure and, okay.
Yeah.
Question. So now, you are going to somehow turn this into office space?
It's pretty close to office space at this point. Of course, the city will be involved in all of that the whole time before we can actually get a certificate of occupancy.
And who would you foresee renting this office space to?
General retail office space, it's oil companies, anybody that actually needs office space.
Okay, how many rooms are in it?
That property there has probably 32,000 square feet of heated and cooled space.
So it's classrooms?
Classroom, some of it's classroom, some of it is office space. It's already developed as office space.
So would you proceed doing something with the classrooms to turn those into offices or?
I would think at some point that there would be some remodeling done on the property to, to generate the kind of usage that we're talking about, but right now, the zoning that we have is single family, which does not work, and that's why we're here tonight. If it's not general retail, that, that we're actually touching to the north, then I don't know how we could use it. I don't think the school setting works anymore.
But when you purchased it, what did you plan to do with it?
When we purchased it, we thought that we had a couple of nonprofit schools who were going to actually take it. In the nonprofit world, it's like they have lots of money or they have no money, and for lack of a better way to say, we waited on one for about a year to come up with their money, and it didn't, it didn't pan out. So now we're on to a more viable usage of the property.
And, and the majority of the property, the future land use map does designate medium intensity business.
I'm sorry.
And, and the majority of the property sits in the area along the arterial designated as medium intensity business, so it's a viable, viable. Any, any other Commissioner questions for?
My question would be, once you zone it there, and I'm learning, does that give you a wider spectrum of ability? We've all asked about you putting office space, but are there other opportunities that might not behoove the neighborhoods around you? I understand the frontage is what it is, but it is a large subject property. I'm asking, is general retail in capacity if you ever wanted to do any other thing than say, well, we were talking about office, general retail encompasses what? What would be available if we give it that designation this evening? Would that allow that we might have resistance from people or would be good business? I'm asking. Am I being an answer to a question? I don't know.
Yeah, yes, we're going to get our zoning ordinance out.
Get the list.
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes.
Is, is general retail just an open, whatever we can fit that fits within general retail? Is there any other things that it could be considered for, especially since it's such a large property with the back half of it special?
And that's a good question, because that is typically a question we deal with when we're talking about rezoning commercial type uses, because there usually are more controversial things in commercial, especially when we're talking about adjacency to residential. Will kind of, give us just a second to kind of look through here, because I don't have it all memorized. One thing to think about as well is general retail traditionally is a transitional area where it is set up to be either closer or more adjacent to residential, and so the uses are going to be a little softer. Traditionally, in the scheme of the hierarchy of zoning, you have, you know, your retail, you'll have your office neighborhood services, general retail, and then commercial. So there, a lot of the uses are appropriate next to residential, but there, there is still a neighborhood services and office that are, I hate to use the term more appropriate, but they're, they're less intense, which is more appropriate next to that.
Thank you.
Let's look through here.
Kevin, are you representing the people that own it or?
No, I'm an owner.
You are? Okay.
Question I have, Kevin, would be, have you looked at parking? Is parking ample there now?
We've had that question posed to us before, that's a good question. We have like four acres there. We see, and we've, we've talked to the neighbors about that, because that's one of the questions that they ask.
They will.
Maybe some of them are here tonight. We've had no opposition from the neighborhood about the parking. We do not see parking on Ben Street at all. We see parking on our property to the inside or to the median part of the property. There is existing asphalt there that we see as being utilized, and I don't have a pointer, so.
One of the.
Sorry.
There's a parking lot right here too, but there's.
I'm familiar with property.
One of the, one of the, the biggest things is when you, between commercial and retail and office and so forth, are the automobile service uses. General retail does allow like auto parts sales. Of course, it has to be inside, minor automotive repair, which is like the tire shop that you have next door, which they're somewhat noncompliant on some of their outdoor storage, but all of that has to be done inside the building as opposed to outside the building that would be allowed in heavy commercial. Let's see, some of the other things, self-service fuel, also some of the more like a commercial tool or trailer rental type wouldn't be allowed. Some of the, let's see, what were the others? The home tool rental would be allowed, some of the appliance service and repair furniture type stores. Let's see. Pawn shops would be allowed with this, well, no, those have to be in commercial. Restaurants with drive-in service or restaurants with a private club with the SUP, of course, that would be an extra layer of accountability going through a rezone process.
And also a lot of your typical retail, like antique shops, bakeries, barber shop, laundromat, those type uses are allowed in general retail.
Angela, most of those would be inside though, are they not?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay.
The main difference is going to be your true retail type uses where, you know, where you'll be selling product and or doing service inside the building as opposed to just traditional services, professional services and offices.
Okay.
Some of them would be with the SUP, but that would be an extra layer.
Okay, well, thank you, Michael. I, I think we get the gist of, but currently we can't do anything with it other than use it for a public school, a church, or a government use unless it's rezoned this evening.
That's correct.
And the property has, has sat fallow for five years now.
That's correct.
I'm surprised, is the copper and the plumbing still in it? I mean, you know.
Sometimes it's, it's an issue.
So, and, and as far as the, the office use space, that's, you know, it's, I myself office at a, at a building. I wish my office was as big as one of them classrooms, but it's not. But, but anyhow, that, that's certainly a viable use. And as far as congestion in the area, I doubt that there's going to be anywhere near the congestion now that there was at eight o'clock and three o'clock every day there. So I'm always excited to see someone come through and take a piece of ground that has lain fallow, it's not generating any taxes, it's not generating jobs, it's not doing anything for anybody, and making investment in the community. I salute you for that. Any other Commissioners have questions for Mr. Stanger?
I have one final question. Mr. Stanger, would it be fair to say that right now you really don't know what you're going to do with it?
We know right now that we don't have many options. Single family, when we're out trying to find a viable, we've gone through the woods, I think Longview ISD has gone through the woods looking for someone to take that property and use it as a school. We just don't see that being used as a school at this time. You know, we would certainly have liked to have had those people come on through and use it for our school, but in visiting with the neighborhood, we have alleviated some of their fears about what, you know, is going to go in over there, and we do not see the, we, we don't see it being used for, for our school in the future.
Okay, but you don't.
We do not have a buyer for it today.
You don't know what you're going to do with it, but you feel like change the zoning and maybe you can do something.
Well, at, at this point though.
Can I, can he answer, please, Chairman?
That's correct, that's correct.
Commissioner Murphy, at this point, he can only use it for a public school, a church, or a government use unless the zoning is changed this evening, period. I mean, there's no other use.
That's correct.
Do you have somebody in mind that's looking at this at this point?
We do not have anyone interested in it right now, as I was saying earlier. We have chased the woods pretty good for a nonprofit to take it, because we thought at the time when we got it that would be the best usage for it, but again, that's kind of a cycle as to when they have money and don't have money.
Okay. Any other Commissioner questions for Mr. Stanger? Do you think that you're going to be able to accommodate the parking based on the size of the structure?
I'm 100% sure on that. Of course, we'll have plenty of people involved in there.
Yes.
They will have to, otherwise they'll have to obtain variances.
Yeah.
Yes.
They'll have to meet parking or they'll have to obtain variances.
Okay. Any other Commissioner questions for Mr. Stanger? Having none, staff comments.
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single family to general retail. The previous occupant was Valley View Elementary School, which has now moved. The applicant had purchased the property in 2013. In order to utilize the property for anything other than a public school or church or governmental use, it does require a rezone. Alpine Road is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for retail type uses, as well as the future land use map does designate this area for medium intensity business, public and private facilities, as well as low-density residential. Staff recommends approval of this request and would be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff? Having none, the public hearing is now open for application, application Z-15-03. Who present wishes to speak in additional support for this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request?
Good evening. My name's Karen Maines. I live at 2108 Wainwright Court. I'm not actually here to speak in opposition. I'm here actually speaking for some of the folks here that are concerned about this being rezoned into a general retail zoning without any real finite goal for this property. They didn't have a chance to organize as many of their neighbors as they would have liked to, a lot of folks are at work, but there's concern that if there's still speculation about what the property is going to be, perhaps at this time rezoning it to an office, which could use the buildings in their, in their present state, and at the point when someone comes forward and wishes to purchase it and repurpose it for general retail space, to come back and ask for that rezone at that time. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Maines. Any, any, who present wishes to speak in additional opposition to this request?
Hi, my name is Angel Brooks, and I'm not, I don't know if I want to oppose or go for.
I'm Allison, I'm her neighbor, and we're going, sorry.
Yeah, we just.
Addresses?
1421 Valley Drive, 1413 Valley Drive. And being that we don't know exactly what they want to do.
Kind of on the fence.
Yeah, but we don't.
This is kind of a first, having two people at the podium.
I am mortally afraid.
Let's do one at a time, if that's okay.
Okay, so we just.
Guess we're not going to do one at a time.
We fairly have a quiet neighborhood, and we want to kind of like keep that, especially after business hours. So with us not knowing what they want to do, we don't know which way we, we want to go, but we just don't want, you know, a bunch of activity going on after business hours.
My concern is when we spoke with these gentlemen on Sunday, and they were very nice, and they really assured us that they weren't going to knock it down, and they weren't going to, you know, have a shopping center or liquor store or something crazy there that, you know, us that live so close to this would have to deal with the inflow of that. They don't want to do that, and I believe them. My concern is what, what Ms. Maines says, once this is rezoned, it could be. says, once this is rezoned, it could be sold, and then could be made into a pawn shop, liquor store, a restaurant, or something that.
I don't think liquor stores.
Well, I'm.
Yeah, liquor store is not allowed in that zoning category, general retail, as well as a pawn shop.
We still wouldn't want, we wouldn't want a restaurant or anything that, you know, and actually, the people that showed up Sunday to meet with them, we actually all kind of came making sure that something like that wasn't going to happen. And like I said, their intention is not to do that, but I think our concern is more, if it doesn't work out, and then they sell it, whoever buys it could do that, and I don't think anybody that.
My intention would be worrying about it sitting there fallow with nobody around, and I can't, I can't believe it hasn't been vandalized, or burglarized, or anything like that yet, but.
It has, but I think there has been some vandalism, because I live right directly across the street from it.
And, you know, once that.
And I'm definitely on the fence when it comes to that. Yeah, I want something there for protection in my home as well.
Well, once it goes to an occupied use, I think it'll be a much safer area. Any additional comments?
That would be out. Like I said, we weren't really even opposed, just concerned.
I understand.
Yeah, more.
I understand, thank you. Ah, okay. Who present wished to speak in additional, additional opposition to this request? Having none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to deny, and I would move to deny on the reason that it sounds to me like we're changing the zoning with no real intent or purpose. And I hear some similarities of, well, we changed the zoning, and now we can do something with it. But if we don't know what we're gonna do with it, I don't think that's a good enough reason to just change the zoning. A lot of people would like to change the zoning to see what would happen. So therefore, unless we are talking about moving towards something like a planned development that would then assure some direction for it, but just to change the zoning to general retail at this point, I move to deny.
Well, that, that brings in marketing issues that Mr. Zorn is painfully aware of, I know, that I, and so I don't.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, a staff question for us, to kind of clarify on something. Angela, oh, no, what Karen just spoke about, if we were to approve it in a general, just office-only, that kind of limits their, but they can actually go out there and market it to that office to protect it, and then come back later. Is that correct, or?
That's possible to go, yes. We're going down in zoning to office. You might want to ask the applicant if he's, if he's okay with that, but.
I don't think they have to. They can just make a recommendation.
But, yeah, you can make that recommendation.
Give you some strength to keep it protected.
Or, what else would be available to them in neighborhood services? That, that's kind of a wide category also, isn't it?
The type of uses that are allowed in neighborhood service would be.
Because the area is slated for medium-intensity business. That's, that's future, per the future land use map.
Yeah. Neighborhood services type uses, like a daycare, um, let's see, a bakery, a barber shop, small press shop, needle workshop, a florist, um, self-service laundry, so laundromat.
Which is similar to kind of general retail. You could have all that stuff in general retail, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Offices are allowed in neighborhood service. A pharmacy is allowed in neighborhood service type uses.
But general.
What was the comment I didn't get?
Mr. Stanger, if he, please come.
There was some question about whether, you know, we're going to have a drive-through window or a 24/7 type application there, and general retail is not 24/7. It stops in the evening. Things have to be put up, closed down, and so this, with the school being there, with traffic coming and going at certain times of day, at nine o'clock, this is supposed to shut down per the ordinance.
No, we don't legislate that. We don't legislate hours of operation.
All right, and I'm corrected.
And that's in any zoning category.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stanger.
Scott, hey, Scott. I mean, Kevin, I'm sorry. Would it, would it behoove you to, to go with that recommendation, to change it?
I don't think at this time we want to do that. We've gone through this. We've met with the neighborhood, and until tonight, I had no idea that we had any opposition. We had talked about having with us at that time, and if people had asked us about the zoning, which Angela had sent me the ordinance by email, I asked everyone for their email if they were interested in knowing what zoning, zoning could go into general retail, but no one asked about that. So I'm real surprised about that. I still get back to what I originally said, that, you know, in the vision that we have, we do not see single-family dwellings over there. We do not see that anytime in the near future happening in Longview, Texas, for that property to be single-family usage. We see something changing there, and we've got to have it changed if we're going to be able to use that property.
You would have to raise.
The property's existing.
You would have to raise that structure in order to, to change that, to even get plumbing and water and sewer in there to service all that. So that's, that's not a viable option necessarily.
There's quite a bit of stuff that would have to be hauled off to make that happen, and we do not see that as being the highest and best use for that property.
Quick question. Tell us, this is probably not your first project, tell us about maybe your last two projects. What, what type of projects were those?
The people that I'm in business with, we have bought stuff all over East Texas, and we have taken stuff that nobody else has wanted, that has sat for years, and we have reinvigorated, regenerated properties. And all over East Texas, we now have stuff that people want. And, you know, it's not really the right way to say this, but that particular piece of property, the majority of Longview ISD voters voted to scuttle it five years ago, to get rid of it. And they didn't have any problem letting it sit for three years empty with no income, no nothing coming in on it. And so, when they called us for a third time to say, hey, would y'all buy it from us? You know, we, we turned it down twice.
You were sought, you were sought out to develop the property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so we did. And, you know, what I'm asking for tonight is us to get it zoned, general retail. The city will still be involved in everything that we do. We have to get COs on everything that we do over there. So I don't understand the reluctance on getting it zoned, general retail. From the 1950s to 2015 is a long time, and certainly land value, land usage can change during the 65 years.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Stanger.
Thank you.
Okay. As it stands, we have a motion to deny. Is that still on the table? Commissioner Murphy?
I have not withdrawn my motion to deny. You know, I, I want, I want Mr. Stagger to understand, you know, we, we all want to see something happen here. Problem is, you're not telling me what's gonna happen. I mean, I got nowhere to go with you on it other than what it can't do, and I understand all the things it can't do. But what we kind of need is, is what can it do? And I'm not hearing that out of you, that you have a clear direction on what it can do, because there is a whole new issue about changing zoning to improve marketing solely. That's not something that we readily do.
Well, there's always a trust issue with everything that's done, I think. But I've got a track record, and there's people in this room that have known me for years, and they know my track record. And my track record is real good. You know, the thing that I think about when you start talking about planned development, what we see there is what we're planning on keeping, you know? We're planning on trying to use that building the way it is right now. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're trying to get a usage that's already there. If we were looking at just dirt there, and, and I was trying to do something with just the dirt there, I could understand the reluctance.
You know, you said office. That's the thing you said. We offered you office, you rejecting the offer. So obviously, you've got something else besides office, because this is what you told us you wanted. I'm not.
I really, I really don't. I, I don't really have something else. If you want to make the motion to do it office, then you make the motion, but that's not why I came in here.
Mr. Chairman, my motion is to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanger. Just one comment. Just like whenever we redo the, the future land development map, and that zoning changes on there, we don't know what's going to go in there. It's just, he happens to be out in front. He needs, as of today, it can only be a school, a church, or a government use, and, and in order for this project to push forward, it needs to be rezoned. Albeit, he did, he did mention office, but obviously, he's not sure yet. And, but what he can be sure of is, if we deny this today, it's going nowhere. That's what I can be sure of. So do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second on motion to deny? Okay. Do I have an additional motion?
I make a motion for approval on C-15-023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, motion passes.
Can we get a, can we get a hand of who voted to approve it and who denied?
Can, can we still speak? Can we still speak?
Well, why would you do that during commissioner comments at the end of the meeting?
Well, I think I have something pertinent to say.
Well, I gavel this down, and I'm pushing forward with the agenda. If you have a comment, you can do it during commissioner comments. It's always open at the end of the meeting. Okay. All right. Moving forward, staff update.
All items at the last council.
She counted.
It's five to three, correct? Five to three?
I abstained.
You abstained?
You abstained? Oh, okay. So five to two with one abstaining. Yes. Okay.
Okay. We ready to go forward here, okay.
All items at the last council meeting were approved by city council.
Staff update. Okay.
That, that was a staff update.
Citizen comment. Commissioner comment. Commissioner Park.
Yes, sir. I think this was getting a little heated on this last discussion we had. I know the Staggers very well.
Pardon me, I, I didn't, I didn't do well.
I do believe they have good intentions on this. We're at a conflict. Here's what happened. The conflict was, we've got to try to protect those individuals that live around there, and the other side of that, we've got to try to promote growth in the city. So getting a little heated about this was getting a little bit out of hand. Feelings started to come into this, which I think we should have simmered down a little bit. I have no doubt that Kevin and his group of investors will do what's right with the neighborhood there. And that's basically what we should have had a discussion on, not, you know, the way you brought it in here. So that's, that's kind of the feelings that we had in here.
Okay. Additional commissioner comments. Chairman comment. I, you know, we're going to, I tried to run, run the meeting so that we do have dialogue back and forth, and I don't, I don't believe that there was heated discussion and anger. So anyhow, this meeting is adjourned.